All right, it's 5:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a special session, work planning session with the Planning Committee. And I would like to, if we would introduce the... Let's just make an introduction to everybody here so everybody understands who is who and what they're doing here.
Gary Joe needs to call the meeting to her.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've got a little ahead of myself, sorry.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board together.
Okay.
Okay. Let's start here.
Jim Hardy.
(laughing). The one next to you.
I'm not in town.
The one next to you. The one next to you, I'm sorry.
Andy McLennan, I'm with the Planning and Zoning, and I am your beyond-the-city-limits representative.
Okay. Go ahead.
Jim Hardy, inside the city.
Hi, Mary Jo Meyer, inside.
Okay.
Brian Beecham, inside the city.
Jeff Jobb, City Attorney.
Craig Whitehead, inside the city, City Manager.
Gary Hogsitt, City Commissioner.
Lucy Susie, Mayor, I live in the city, of course.
Leonard Kafleesh.
Kelly Passour, Assistant City Manager, zoning administrator.
David Schwanker, City Clerk, Treasurer.
Barbara Amber, inside the city.
Shaw Anderson, inside the city.
Steve McBride, Department of State.
(laughing).
I have no problem with that, in the city of London.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Going to work session with Planning Commission. The status of the previous December 28th, 27th directive by the City Commission to the Planning Commission to review and recommend text amendments related to the following. One was the attention attracting devices and electronic signs. And I'll go through these in order. Two was considering downtown signage. Three involved food trucks. Four involved gravel, excuse me, gravel parking lots. Five were recreational vehicles, fifth wheels and travel trailers that are occupied. And six, tiny houses. So, what we're here to do, we're discussing with you, members of the Planning Commission, regarding the modified recommendations from the Planning Commission to adopt an ordinance implementing tax amendments to the Code of the City of Independence, Kansas. Specifically, Appendix B zoning code relating to off-street parking requirements tabled from the December 13th, 2018 City Commission meeting.
Mayor, if I may, I was going to give you an update on those items of where we're at that the Commission directed the Planning Commission to look at.
Okay.
The first was the attention attracting devices and signs. And I think, if you'll recall, that had to do with some of the churches have requested to have electronic signage, and some of them were in zones that did not allow electronic signs, such as residential or central business district. And so, that tax amendment was done, and then we had to make some modifications to that. So, that was recommended in ordinance 4269, was adopted by the Commission on February 22nd. So, that's the status of that one, that one's done.
Okay.
Downtown signage, the Planning Commission requested that the Main Street work with the downtown businesses and review the downtown signage because we had some complaints. And they reviewed it, and they actually did not recommend any modifications, but they did recommend updating the brochure that the IHPRC puts together on how the proper signage should be in the downtown because it's a historical district.
What were some of the complaints that you received? Was it regarding to the current signage ordinance?
Yes, like they wanted to do additional signage on the side of their building. They didn't want to be limited to the number of signage. Basically, they wanted to do what, you know, didn't think there should be regulations in that way. And, of course, the historic board disagreed with that. So, I think, so we had some of that, and so that was part of the complaints that inspired some looking at that again. But once they looked at it, and they looked at some other communities, really ours, they didn't think ours was out of line, and the Planning Commission agreed with them. So, we did not bring any text amendments back to the Commission on that.
Okay.
Food trucks, that was one on our list, and it has been completed. They recommended a text amendment, and three ordinances were adopted by the Commission on July 26th related to that. By the way, green means done.
Okay.
Yellow, in progress. This is the one, actually, that has to do with the item we're here to talk about tonight. And I'll go through the timeline on that in just a second. Recreational vehicles, fifth wheels and travel trailers that are occupied. We have not gotten to that one yet because we've been working through these others. So, that one, we have not started, and the tiny houses, we have not started on that one as well. On the timeline, on where we're at, on the item we're here to talk about tonight is July 2nd. The Planning Commission had a hearing about this. They actually, it ended up being adjourned. There was a lot of discussion, and they adjourned it till October. In October, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the City Commission to modify the language, adding additional definitions related to ADA and gravel, and modified the design requirements and the off-street parking regulations to allow gravel, meaning certain specifications in M1 and M2, which are industrial districts. November 5th, that was brought to the City Commission, and the City Commission tabled action, returned the item back to the Planning Commission for clarification on specific elements of the original recommendation and provided suggestions. December 4th, the Planning Commission reviewed and responded to the feedback from the City Commission to modify their original recommendation. And then, December 13th, the City Commission reviewed the Planning Commission's modified recommendations and tabled action until after a joint worst section with the Planning Commission. And just to review the feedback from the City Commission was, you had requested to know what the initial intent and purpose of the tax amendment was, and if the tax amendment would attract new businesses. And the Planning Commission felt that it wouldn't, to make the city more attractive, to recruit new business to the city enabled flexibility for existing businesses to expand their parking area if need be for growth in alignment with the Economic Development Strategic Directive Number One of the Community-Based Strategic Plan. And the Commission had concerns about the appearance of the large gravel parking lots, gravel running off in heavy rains, ability to adequately mark ADA spots. And the Planning Commission response was, "Non-ADA off-street parking areas shall be graded, paved, or otherwise improved with all-weather dustless material that is contained in such a manner as to not allow surface material to wash off during heavy rains and so drained as to avoid flow of water across sidewalks. ADA-compliant parking assessable past to an entrance to the facility served by off-street parking shall be hard-surfaced." And then, more feedback from the Commission was suggestions on limiting the size of gravel parking lots to a maximum number of spaces. Continue to require new buildings or new industries to hard-surface required off-street parking to city code standards, but allow existing industries that already have a gravel parking lot that is grandfathered in, which is a non-conforming use, to expand or enlarge their existing gravel parking lot. However, if they have an existing hard-surface parking lot, any expansion or enlargement would have to be hard-surface. And the response from the Planning Commission was, they unanimously approved a motion to not limit the size of the non-hard-surface parking lot to a maximum number of spaces, nor require new businesses or industries to hard-surface or business expansions to hard-surface. The exceptions to this would be if the business had an existing hard-surface parking area, they cannot remove it and replace it with a non-hard-surface material. If a business expands an existing hard-surface parking area, they may do so with hard-surface material for a period of up to two years. After that, the expanded parking area must be removed or hard-surfaced. And then, just going back through the language changes, the ADA definitions that were originally recommended were not modified. The last modifications are actually the ones in green. The ones in yellow are the first modifications. And so, you can go through that. The biggest change would have been on the exceptions to the design requirements, which they indicated in M1 and M2 districts, other material may be substituted in lieu of concrete, asphalt, concrete, or asphalt double-sealed surfaces for non-ADA off-street parking. Spaces for new parking areas and expansion of non-hard-surface parking areas that are grandfathered in. If a business currently has a hard-surface parking lot and needs to expand that parking area, they expand it using a non-hard-surface parking material for up to two years, at which time they will need to hard-surface the expanded parking area meeting the surface material requirements of 705.1, or remove the expanded parking area. The exceptions only apply to new or expanded parking areas and do not allow for the removal and replacement of existing concrete, asphalt, concrete, or asphalt double-sealed surfaces with other material. The exceptions shall meet the following requirements. Non-ADA off-street parking areas shall be graded, paved, or otherwise improved with an all-weather dustless material that is contained in such a manner as to not allow surface material to wash off during heavy rains and so drained as to avoid flow of water across sidewalks. ADA-compliant parking assessable past to an entrance to the facility served by off-street parking shall be hard-surfaced. And then, on the service drives, originally, they were going to allow them to not have to be hard-surfaced, but then, when they looked at it again, they decided to take that exception out and require the service drives or driveways to be hard-surfaced. So, the ADA parking space dimensions that we didn't modify that, that's not in the code, and so we needed to add that in. And then, they just made us light, took the reference to gravel out on the striping requirement, and the ADA accessibility here again is, was not modified. So, that's basically where we're at.
Good job. Yeah. Couple of questions that I had right off the bat was, let me refer back to where we were at. Where... They can expand to using a non-hard-surface parking material for up to two years, at which time they will need to hard-surface the expanded parking area meeting the surface material requirements of 705-1, or remove the expanded parking area. So, that would be, how would that be enforced? That would be through, if they didn't comply, that would be through a fine? So, how would you, how would you make someone comply that...
That's probably a term of question.
That they've had, that they've got two years, and the two years has come, and then, and they're not going to comply. So, how would, how would we address that?
I believe there's an enforcement section in the zoning code where you could sign them in municipal court, and that would result in a fine. Or, if it was significant enough, you could bring a civil injunction action and the court, get a court order requiring that you do the due compliance.
The reason I ask is that on our, when we're dealing with nuisance in the city, and we find those problem areas, you know, they're issued a citation. For those, some of that property, when the city ends up, it's, this is kind of off the subject a little bit, but it kind of relates to that. You know, we end up going back and taking care of the property, and then assessing that dollar amount to the last owner of that property. So, yeah, there's a fine involved, but it ends up being the city's responsibility to maintain. So, that was my question is, you know, what if, what if they decide that they don't have the funds, they don't have the money to comply with that?
You mean like if they've expanded with gravel, the charges is up, and they just don't do anything?
Yeah.
I don't know that the zoning code has a section that allows the city to go in and abate the situation. I think you have to sign them in municipal court. A typical ruling in municipal court might be, "I'm going to fine you X amount of dollars per day until this situation is cleared up, and all of a sudden, usually gets cleared up."
Okay.
Or, a civil injunction action, the court could do this, the district court could say the same thing, order them to do it. If they don't do it by the deadline, then the court could find them in contempt and do a pergium, now they're some...
So, eventually, the law would play into the, into the hands of the city, and they would eventually have to either comply, or the fines would be to the point that they would, it would move them in that direction to comply with that and make sure that was completed. Okay. Gentlemen?
You know, I see if we've got an existing manufacturer that's got a gravel lot, and they're increasing their production or the size of the plant within, within reason, and I mean a few spots, that they should be allowed, and their lot is gravel, that they should be allowed to add limited spaces in gravel, that they shouldn't be required to come back with the addition and pave the existing lot plus the additional spaces, or be required to pave the new spaces. But for a new facility, you know, I think the only paving surface should be a hard surface for an industry, for long-term. The paving solves a lot of problems, not only for them, but for us. But with the runoff, the gravel displacement, control of the runoff, you can do it much better and guarantee with the hard surface. We're broad enough, I looked into the calcium chloride, if that's an acceptable solution, that that becomes a continued maintenance factor, which would increase our enforcement responsibility. And then, the determination of when it needs to be reapplied and enforcing them to apply it. The way the calcium chloride works, it draws moisture from the air or from the ground to keep the particles moist. So, with that condition, you create other problems, tracking it into vehicles or into their facility, but it doesn't give us the same as or equal to a paved surface. For new, new facilities, I think a paved surface, concrete, asphalt, you know, even chip and seal, it does provide a hard surface, but it's less, a lesser quality, a lesser performance than the other two. But to allow a gravelled, open-surface parking lot, I think that's an area that we, we really don't want to go as a city. You look at the new facilities, the, the cost of building a facility, it's just another cost factor that should be taken into consideration. So, you know, I can understand with the existing gravel parking lots of some industries, if they're adding positions, not requiring hard surface there, but any new facility. You know, I think we should keep it as we had it in the past. It has to be a hard-surface asphalt or concrete material that, you know, the, the calcium chloride or dust-reducing materials are not really intended for a long-term situation.
All right, thank you, Leonard. Gary, you have some concerns about this.
Just eager to hear what the Planning Board members have to share.
I think part of our thoughts were that, in the initial intent, one of the things that was to attract new businesses and to align with growth. And we felt very concerned that asking a new business, that even maybe they would purchase an existing building that didn't have pavement, to ask them to start that business and to add the cost of paving the parking lot might be something that didn't fall in with those two points. We felt like it would discourage people starting new businesses, and that we felt like it wouldn't be in line with growth. And we felt like maybe extending that two years would give them a little bit more time. I don't, I don't know. That was our initial thought.
I think that, you know, if you've got an existing facility that has an existing lot, I see some latitude there. But if it's total new facility that's being built from ground up, I think that initially, that should be done, because you run into the problem after two years is enforcing the pavement. You know, are we willing to take the industry to court to force them to pay their parking lot? You know, it's easier to get it done initially than it is to come back later on. Once the plant is in operation, now you've got to displace your employees' parking to pave the surface. Now, if it's concrete, you've got the initial grading and staking and placement, but then you've got to allow cure time. So, you know, and with weather, it would be more disruptive for them to come back later and pave after they're in operation than initial construction. But again, you know, with an existing facility that's there and a new company is coming in, I could understand there as, you know, grandfathering the parking to encourage reuse of the building and allowing some leeway there. But a total new facility, I think it would, is where we would want to keep the surfaces paved. I designed a church in Iola, and they didn't pave the parking lot because of cost initially, but they found, within a year, they were paving the parking lot because of the increased maintenance they had on the building. The gravel, the dirt, tracking into the facility that they found that it was advantageous for them to go ahead. And then, it provided a lot, other controls of where they park, the spacing, and that. Those issues were resolved. But, you know, I, I can understand your concern with an existing building for somebody to take and start up a company. Usually, they're looking at limited funds in that case. And, you know, I think we should address those cases. But if we're looking at a brand-new facility coming in, I think in those cases that they, they should have a hard surface set up. And that's where, you know, giving the two-year, when we look at the alternates such as calcium chloride to keep down dust, it's just going to be a continued enforcement issue for the city that, you know, we probably should eliminate alternate surfaces, or if there is some magic material, specify it directly. But anything that still allows the granules and the gravel to be exposed is going to be an enforcement issue for us and cause us other issues that we should neglect.
I just want to clarify that two years only applies to someone that has an existing hard-surface parking lot, and they wish to expand it. So, that was thought like if, you know, their refinery has a turnaround, and they put in some temporary parking for a short period of time, and they don't particularly need it beyond, you know, the two years. So, I think that was the thought behind that. It is, so the two years only is talking about if they have an existing parking lot that's hard-surface, and then they can expand it with a non-hard-surface for up to two years. So, like if they had a special need for some additional parking, but wasn't going to be long-term. That was the thought behind that. They were not talking, they, they were, the other was related to any, you know, any new parking would not have, the two years didn't play into that. They could, they could have non-hard-surface for a new parking lot.
So, with the reference of the two years, it's a temporary lot, then they would have to remove the gravel?
Yes, they would either have to hard-surface it or remove it. So, that, that was the whole thing with the two years. And that's the only thing it plays into.
So, this was a unanimous decision, I remember, hearing.
Yes. One of the other things that we considered was, we tried to come up with an understanding of what industries came to Southeast Kansas recently. And one of the examples that we looked at was Horizon Aero Structure in Chanute. And they invested, and I looked it up online, they invested in a 70,000-square-foot facility, and they invested $15 million to do it. And I was fortunate enough to talk with the builder for that project. It was Kane Construction based out of Fredonia. And they have gravel, it's hard-surfaced in front of the office. It's asphalt in front of the office, but around the facility, it's gravel. And I asked what stipulated that. And when it came up into the conversation, it was the cost. And when they started looking at ways that they could cut costs on the project, that's the first thing to go, was doing the hard surface around the entire structure. Now, on the front, they did hard surface, they did asphalt to access into the office. But for deliveries and everything else, the cost, it was eight, six to eight dollars a square foot. So, when you start looking at a 70,000-square-foot facility, and the amount that went around it, you start talking about real numbers. And that was part of the reason that Horizon chose Chanute, from what Kane said, and Brandon Kane, was the fact that they had some lenience on what they were liable to do with the hard surface around it. And that came up in part of our conversation. And I believe Philip over there talked with one of the gentlemen at Horizon about it a little bit as well.
Yeah, exactly the same comments. I mean, it was almost verbatim.
So, we use that as a point of reference. I'm not sure, so I've been in Independence for six years now, back in the area. I don't know of any industry that's came here in my time. So, are there any examples that anybody can give us?
Well, what you could do is consider it with a variance. Maybe that way, you're looking at exact use. You're not throwing a blanket, but you're allowing the manufacturer to bring in a variance. Because if you've got a pipe yard, there, you would want something other than grass to keep your maintenance down. And I could see a gravel surface, well, the drives going through the pipe yard, I could see that being gravel too, that you wouldn't want to require it. But when you look at employee parking and other areas, I think that's where we want to have some controls. So, instead of saying a blanket, and they determine what they want to do, I think we should say what we expect and require them to come present the alternate for us to approve. That way, you know, the way we have it, you don't have to put it around the building. And you can't really, without knowing the use of the facility, you can't create an ordinance that's going to address those. But if, if you allow a variance is really, the only reason for a variance is to address a hardship of a developer. In the case that you're describing, there could be hard case conditions that, you know, you would want to look at areas for their deliveries, short-term parking, or, or material storage yards that wouldn't necessarily have the problem created with a high-traffic area. But, you know, a definite parking lot and constant traffic is different, that we would want to see, see that. So, I don't know, what I would, would see, the variance case, that, okay, you come and talk to us, and you know, we, we could address each specific case like the one you're, you're describing, how it can be compatible to them.
And I think that's what we, our intent is what you're talking about. And that's been our intent with it, is to try to provide some flexibility and not some hard line that, hey, it's just going to be this way with no exceptions. And to have the ability to try to get in that game and draw some industry here. So, and I really think, and I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but I think that was part of the intent with what we were trying to do.
Yeah, I would 100% agree with that. You know, that, that does increase the amount of variances that we have. And as, as we give on more variances, at some point in time, it makes a state, it makes a case for why do we even have the rule if we're going to give a variance every time? You know, it, it makes it very difficult to even, you know, say, oh, yeah, we have to have this hard surface. have this hard surface. But if you don't want to put it in, then come see us, and we'll, we'll back off of that. So, at that point in time, you know, what is the, what is even the point of having that ordinance there if we're just going to back off of it every time? If we give them some leeway to do that, that does a couple of things for us. It opens us up to allowing companies to see, oh, well, we're not going to have to spend, you know, a third of what we spend on our building to hard-surface a lot, and that helps us out, and we can get into this place. And it's a good community, so we want to, we want to give it a shot rather than ruling us out right off the jump street. Secondly, you know, that, that also allows us to, you know, sorry, I lost my train of thought there. But I am going to touch on something else that I've been hanging on to. As far as their building maintenance goes, you know, that's really their, their call. I mean, if they want to save that money upfront, and they figure out in, in the future that they want to hard-surface that, more power to them, that's, that's a plus for us. However, you know, when you start dictating, you know, how their facility needs to look in every aspect, and dictating, you know, how they have to set up everything, now you're starting to kind of get into how they run their business. Now, you're opening yourself up for even more possible enforcement issues and, and just being completely skipped over for those new businesses that want to come to our town or, you know. I, I, part of me wanted to ask the Montgomery County Action Council as to what their thoughts are on this. You know, what are they seeing? Are they seeing the same types of issues attracting businesses to towns that don't have these requirements?
I was just thinking the same thing. I wish you were here for this discussion.
Yeah, and that's something I just thought of like an hour ago, otherwise I would have reached out to her.
I just met with Tricia this afternoon with Nathan Berg. Does anybody know Nathan Berg?
Berg?
Berg, B-E-R-G. So, I guess he's born and raised here, and started a business in Oklahoma, and he's wanting to come back. So, he's just bought a building south of Deering, just bought it just close to the day where he's going to move his business. And, you know, there, he's got the gravel drive, and I mean, he's, he's in the county, so he can get, he can get back to Southeast Kansas for a lot less money than if he were building a place in Independence. And, and I am all for attracting new industry, whatever it takes. And if this is really a legitimate concern that would keep people from building here, and they're interested in changing it. But we also just did a community-based strategic plan, and the number-one concern of people was, let's make our city beautiful again. It's not looking so great. And I think this is a little bit of traction for that.
And speaking to that, you know, we're talking about strictly M1 and M2. We're not talking about residential.
Sure.
We're not talking about marketing.
Understood.
You know, these are places that are off beaten track.
Absolutely.
You know, back near, behind the Hackney area.
Right.
Down near where Atlas is.
Sure.
You know, out near the airport. These are not in-town places where you're going to see this on a daily basis unless you are physically going to these places.
Yeah, I agree, Philip. I, it's definitely something to be considered. I just, you know, my alley, I don't know if you know where I live, but there's only two houses on my block, so there's only a few cars that use the alley. And it's so bad that you sync up into your axles because of gravel.
I know your name is heard very well.
Okay, good. Yeah, good. So, it just seems like gravel is not permanent, and it's not well taken care of in many cases, certainly not our alley, or most alleys around town are looking pretty sad right now because of the weather. So, I, I don't know. I guess I'd like to see some statistics, maybe you've got others besides the fact that Chanute's been more successful at us, that this will really make a difference in attracting industry by...
Well, I mean, as far as the permanency and heavy use goes, you know, I worked for Lane Energy for 11 years. They had a gravel parking lot the entire 11 years, ran a box plate over it once a year, and never really had to do much more than that to it. And we're talking heavy equipment in and out of there all day long, trucks in and out of there all day long. And it was never an issue. You know, DARPA has a facility, or when they were separate, they had a facility out on the same road, same thing with them. You know, I think it, it does hold up well as long as it's done correctly. You know, that being said, you know, I've traveled least roads for the last 16 years of my life. And, you know, those are roads that are made straight through farmers' fields that were never intended to have a road. And when they're built right, they stay. You know?
But those would have very, very low traffic on them, wouldn't they?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a couple times a day, every single day.
Really?
And, you know, you're not just running a pickup up and down them. There's, there's chemical trucks going up and down them, there's pulling units going up and down them, there's, it's, it's a lot more than people think.
Okay. Thanks for that.
I know when we discussed this, I was picturing a smaller industry coming in, starting up, just employed 50 to 100. That's what I was picturing. Not, not to compare with the Fortune 500, where the resources wouldn't be a problem for pay, or concrete, the whole thing. But 50 to 100, and like Philip said, small business like that would be ideal for Independence, but right off the bat, a third of their cost would go to that surface where it could be for capital inside, for employees, right, pay.
I was saying to a few of you as I walked in the room that I'm going to be repaving a big chunk of our alley behind our building, because we've had to tear it up to replace the drain line, and it's just prohibitively expensive. So, I totally get where you're coming from. And that's just, you know, 400 square foot.
I think the number we came up to by asking with people that do it is six to eight dollars a square foot is the cost.
I can't picture how many square foot off the top of my head, though, how they would typically need to do, but I'm guessing it's a huge number.
Yeah, I think so.
And if you think about it, you know, 10,000-square-foot parking lot is really not that big. When you start putting vehicles in there that the average length of is 20 feet.
So, that'd be $60,000.
Sixty to eighty.
Sixty.
Yeah. You're, you're basically talking about, you know, a, you're talking about a parking lot that's about the size of McDonald's parking lot? I mean, that's, that's a huge expense.
Right.
Well, why should an M1 zone be excluded from paving a parking lot where you've got a small business that's opening an office, and you're going to require them to pave a parking lot? So, of them, their startup costs, you'll have a lot more businesses coming in to expand. So, you know, why are you granting an industry that we don't have coming in a gap? But then, what we have every day, we're going to hold the line. Or you're going to consider a small industry coming in that we want them to come, and they don't have to pay their parking lot, but I'm going to build a new house, I'm going to build a garage. And now, I've got five, $6,000 for a driveway that has to be paved. And it's harder for me to get the five or $6,000 for the driveway than it is for an industry that's selling a product.
I, I think that is a good comparison, but I think, on the other hand, you have to be a good neighbor. You have to match what the neighborhood is doing. I mean, if, if I've got a downtown business, you can't have the next-door neighbor have a gravel, you know, sidewalk out front. It's got to be consistent, so...
So, your 400 square foot of concrete in the alley is justified?
Touche. I just think in a neighborhood that, you know, that houses need to sort and match. You can't have a, I mean, you can have a dump next door to a nice house, but you'd rather not because it's, it's unfair to the person.
When we're looking at businesses, we're looking at the same thing to encourage, that basically, you know, we have to look at the long-term use of what we want the city to be. In an industrial park setting, what do we see the necessity, the need for in our industrial park? You know, dealing with, with the gravel runoff in our drainage, in our streets, you know, how are we going to control that? Are we going to require heavy traffic areas to be hard surface? Are we going to require them all, allow them all to be gravel if, you know?
Well, to answer, you know, your statement, you know, Michael Conway is opening a, a car shop right out there in that industrial zone. I think he would be greatly appreciative of the fact that he does not have to hardscape all of his potential parking area. You know, I think that would help him dramatically.
But his is already under, since he already, he's not allowed to participate into, into this, is he? Since his is all...
In an M1, M2 zone?
But he's already built. He should be required to pave now, not wait.
The point that I'm trying to make is, would that have made things easier for him? Would he have been able to, you know, pull that whole thing off in a shorter period of time? Would he have been up and running faster? Would it have been, would it have been a more attractive thing for him to do sooner? You know, that's just one example, but, you know, it speaks directly to what you were just saying for a smaller business that comes into our area. If they want to be in that M1, M2 zone, that's their prerogative. If they want to be in our downtown district or in one of our commercial districts, then, you know, that has stipulations to go along with it. You know, what we're trying to convey is manufacturing jobs pay well, employ a lot of people, and the buildings can go up very quickly, they can be put online very quickly. And we're afraid that we are not in the running because of the additional costs that are required to facilitate them bringing their business here. Whether, whether they are publicly looking at us or not, you know, when, when push comes to shove, you know, is that a consideration? I mean, case in point, you know, our, our Amazon distribution center that, yes, was out in the county, but they, they left stating that the reasons that they were leaving was due to the fact that it was going to cost them more money to refit their facility than it would cost them to build a new one. Would it have been more attractive for, for them if we would have said, hey, come to Independence, put this thing in our industrial zone back here? Don't have to hardscape your parking lot. You can put your new facility here and stay where you're at, instead of moving to Olathe, which is where they are now, in a facility that's actually smaller than the one that they were in here? I mean, would that have kept that several hundred jobs here and, and those several thousand people that were a part of our countywide community that are now gone? And that's, that's a huge hurdle for us to overcome. And, you know, hindsight is 20/20, but these are the types of things that, that I think about when, when something like this comes across our table.
I know that when we were, when Anna and I were looking around the cities, deciding where we wanted to move, one of the cities that we were really impressed with was McPherson. And they're just booming. They've got industries springing up all over the city. Do, does anybody know if they have requirements regarding this? I don't know any.
I spent a fair amount of time in McPherson, but I don't know any of the requirements.
Craig, what about, you've been in eight or nine cities. Have you seen this issue before?
Not really, other than in my last city, you just, you had to pave no matter what you were bringing in, even manufacturing. Granted, we didn't have country, or like our M1 zones that are industrial more, so you just had to pave, and they had to take care of the runoff of that water. And we started getting into permeable, permeable concrete to solve drainage, cheaper for the developers. The other thing, of course, we solved is getting business was incentives. Gravel parking lots was not an incentive that I ever ran across, we always dealt with. And so, I'm saying, you could still require hard surface, but through incentive, other incentives...
Financial.
Yeah, financial. Because right now, I mean, we, if, and Kat, if, if there's an industry coming, we, the city, already has incentives applied per job, so much dollar amount that we'll give to an industry, as well as some property tax abatement. So, I've never seen this in like, you know, specifically affecting a development.
And weren't you previously in some fairly small cities, much smaller than American Fork?
Yeah, my first city manager job was city half this size.
Half this size?
In a very rural area. We had, I don't see how long ago that was, but it was...
We can calculate it.
Yes. Trying to remember. I don't remember, again, coming across it, but then we didn't have a lot of development either. I mean, it was kind of like, this was north, up on the Canadian border, and so you didn't get a lot of development, other than the state. But again, I've never faced that. We always, it was other development. Like I said, my last city, last two cities, first, some were larger, more urban. And incentives, I mean, talk about why the companies locate, where do they, why do they move, why do they locate, where do they locate? Well, moving to Olathe was because it was Olathe. And, and Olathe was in that area next to airports, next to, you know, a lot of services. There's lots of reasons companies choose a site selection and leave. So, you can't, it's hard, it's hard to tell, you know, what a company, sometimes it's where the CEO's wife wants to live, you know?
Sure.
That, that always plays into it, where they all like to shop. I mean, we had industries, we had the head of Gateway Computers started in one city I was in. They eventually moved their headquarters to San Diego, because that's where they wanted to live, they left South Dakota. I was just a lot of things in site selection. And sometimes maybe the gravel parking lot flips the scales, you never, you never know.
Well, there should be...
I'm on the, more on the mayor's side than, I think, as you can tell.
I think one of the things that we're looking for is to get the ball rolling. And that's, we're trying to come up with ways when we see an opportunity, and we see something close by, and that was part of their stimulus in doing it. And there was economic assistance, and that's readily available online as well. Where do we get, where do we get started?
Something, we have the Economic Development Fund, but we don't have really any hard guidelines of how that would be distributed. That could be tied in as an incentive to help out, offset some of the initial costs, or like, like Craig mentioned, some other abatements that we have. We just did, was it 2015 or 16, the West Laurel Street Industrial Park, and then West Main?
Were you replanning?
No, the neighborhood revitalization.
Oh, yeah, just probably 2015, probably.
I think we, then we split it, so now there's West Main and also the Industrial Park. So, we have handled some ways that can get tax abatement to an industry, but we still have our economic development money that we could look at, at distributing other ways to get financial assistance to attract businesses. You know, I, I think you could use some of those to offset the paving, but, you know, still, there, there are some areas in industrial plant or development that, pipe yards, material, steel, storage yards, that I would see to be exempt from paving, but... but when you look at, at actual vehicle or traffic, um, you know, I, I still think we need to-
Those are already exempt. It's the actual parking area.
Yeah, I thought we had something in one of them about pipe storage. You know, the, the alleys, like, like you mentioned, the gravel alleys are a maintenance problem for us, but you look at the effect in the street, how much gravel washes out in every rain that into the street, that becomes our problem. And it increases our cost of, of maintenance and, and operations. So that's why I'm hesitant to allow parking areas to, uh, be excluded from hard surface or to allow gravel surface, just.
And that was, that was actually one of the, one of the requirements in there is to, is to design your lot in such a fashion that it negates that gravel runoff into the street. And also having that hardscaped service drive, a hard service, service drive is another barrier point to keep that from meeting our streets. Um, you know, and, you know, I, I kind of feel like we've hit this impasse and, and we, you know, now we're talking incentives and abate, abatements versus cost savings, but, you know, all those incentives and all those abatements are more cost to the city. And this is something that could be a cost savings to an industry or a business that has really no cost to the city or the county or the state. I mean, this is, this is, you know, simple economics as opposed to macroeconomics here.
So a couple of thoughts that have kind of rolled into my head here, based on what I've heard. I, I appreciate your comments on the, uh, the incentives, the tax incentives, but I, I think, and I also understand from Craig's point, that there's as much art as there is the science on business recruitment and retention. At the end of the day, every city, I believe, is offering very similar incentives in terms of tax incentives. So what are we doing to differentiate ourselves to even be on the map is kind of the thought process, too. The other thing that I'm thinking and that we talked about as, as a group here, I believe, was, um, although I like to be a dreamer and think we could land a Fortune 500 or a larger company, I'm also pretty realistic on the model that we've developed, whether intentional or unintentional, over the last several years of bootstrapping entrepreneurship, coming out of the college through the fab lab, through returners, so on and so forth. The budgets that I would suspect that the capital outlays that I would suspect those companies had to start with are in the tune of several hundred thousand dollars to get a business up and running versus a multimillion dollar backing. Just on the simple, the simple math we did earlier on a 10,000 square foot parking lot, at $60,000, if your budget is half a million dollars, 10% of it just goes to parking, that doesn't even go to, you know, permitting and structure and hiring and IT and services and all that type of stuff, setting up for a new facility. You know, with our strategy we've employed over the last several years is that we'd rather put, have lots of little eggs versus one big egg in a basket. I see this, this, this parking lot as giving some flexibility to maybe attract, uh, more littler eggs, that maybe someday will grow up to be a great big egg for us, and then we can have that conversation. The, the variance structure, although I, I, I like it, and I like the, having the flexibility to it, I'm afraid that from a site selection standpoint, we don't, a company doesn't even get through the funnel. We don't get through the funnel far enough on a company for a site selection model to even have that opportunity to offer up that there is a variance. We're probably eliminated before we even know we were on the, on the shortlist, so to speak. And so those are some of the thoughts that were coming through in the conversation we had as a group. You know, there's, you know, I, I don't think, I think we're, maybe it reached a consensus in that the temporary expansion of, of if you have a hard surface going to gravel, makes a lot of sense. So if, you know, Tacme wants to take on some new business, but you know what, it's, it's looking like it's a cyclical feature that it's going to be around for 18 months and they need to bring on another dozen people per shift, and they don't have parking, throw out the gravel, let's get it on and, and let's get that going. Let's get the jobs, let's get the, the revenue streams that are generated by that. Because there is the taxation on the backside that would help offset some of these incremental costs that we've been discussing of, of water runoff and road cleaning for gravel and that kind of stuff. The, the stance that I think we've kind of taken is, is we've had this model in place for a number of years. We've had some victories, but can we get some more victories by adding some additional flexibility? And if it doesn't work, we can revisit it in, you know, 48 months and, and go back to the old way. So it's, that was some of the conversation that we had as well. So that's a lot that I just peeped out there in two minutes, but there it is. It's a thumbs up. You know, I, that's, that's kind of, I think, part of the angle we're coming from. And I, I totally get that from a beautification standpoint and from, you know, cleanliness and all, I get it, I do get it. But I also have seen the, the feedback from the community and, and their survey that we took earlier, or earlier last year, you know, jobs, jobs, jobs. People want to come back to Independence. We hear it every year at Need a Wallet. I want to come back, but I don't have anything to do. And so here's another opportunity to say, come back and start your own gig. We're going to be a low-cost solution for you to start your own business, and we, we're going to try to make it happen. I'd much rather tell them that than, yeah, Mercy closed, that sucks. God, Amazon left, that's too bad. You know, come back, start your own business. We're going to make it as capital friendly as we possibly can. And maybe we have to settle on, on having a gravel parking lot with some chloride on it for a while, until they get big, and then, then we have to keep them from moving to San Diego.
So then, so that gives, that gives that company that's coming in some flexibility, so they're not paying that out on the initial startup cost. Gives them a little timeframe to see how this is going to progress, and either, either it will or it won't in that timeframe. And then as it, if it does, then at that point, they know what the stipulations are. And-
There are no, if once they build a building or they buy an existing, they never have to pave it. Only if it, they're expanding a temporary parking area. If they're expanding an existing, no.
Spending existing park service area temporarily is the two year-
That's a two-year limit. If they build a new facility and it goes gravel, they never have to pave it. The two-year was only on an existing paved, that you've got two years to use it as gravel, then you either remove it or pave it.
Okay.
May I say something?
Sure.
I didn't sound up, I should, but I, it's ironic, this is about parking lots.
You have to come up to the microphone.
Anyway, I think what they're trying to help, too, is if you think of like Murphy's Oil out there and the funeral home where they do the sandblasting and stuff. When you go into those businesses, there's driveways, and when you want to go into the lobby to plan a funeral, it's asphalt, whatever it is. And same way at Murphy's Place. Now, I don't know if they're out in the county, so it doesn't apply to them, but if you think about what they're doing, if you go around their buildings, it's gravel. You know, when they pull in and back up and unload tombstones or whatever they're doing, they don't drive on, on asphalt. Matter of fact, asphalt's a very, when you got big vehicles like US food trucks, I know, driving on blacktop, man, you were, you're sealing it and fixing cracks and stuff like that all the time. So that's cost prohibitive, too, unless they can afford concrete. And like Sonic's new concrete, Jesus Christ, that's $150,000 probably worth of concrete. And that's, that may not, that, I guarantee it's in that neck of the woods. That drive-through lane we put around Dairy Queen, I just put a concrete drive-through lane around there, and it was $26,000 because it's cheaper to go ahead and spend it now while the construction's down than for me to always have to go through there and fix that blacktop because cars are constantly turning. So I don't think there, um, I think it was, I, I wrote this, I shared this with, um, Kelly the other day, but Lou Holtz one time said, "It's never a good time to make a bad decision, but it's always a good time to make the right decision." So whatever y'all think the variance needs to be, y'all need to put it in place and, and help them because they can keep answering these questions and keep coming back and forth, and this could go on for a year, you know? But, um, just, um, realize if it's, if you got to worry about drainage going to the road, well, it has to be a driveway there, and it has to, if they have a, a customer entrance, it needs to be a hard surface. And then, but if it's around a building where they're getting deliveries and trucks and some employees are parking back there, there ought to be some variance on that, and it, it ought to not be real complicated. Anyway, that's all I had to say. Sorry.
Thanks, Brent.
Yes?
I don't have a vote. Thank God. You have, require hard service, not require hard service, there's probably room to compromise. Several, like what Brent said, uh, maybe hard service in where retail customers might be required to park, supposed to employ parking, uh, or phase in the hard surface over a period of time so that it's not an upfront cost prohibitive thing for a new business. There's a lot of areas you could compromise on.
And still get the desired effect that you want. It's usually long-term over a period of time. Yeah. Gentlemen, any, Gary?
And, uh, in the spirit of that, you know, visitor slash ADA parking area that's hardscaped or hard surfaced is, you know, kind of something that I wholeheartedly agree with, and some of us argue back and forth about that in, in the zoning side.
Was it Michelle? Was it Michelle that argued the most?
Yeah.
I bet it was.
Not at all. But, uh, you know, I, I see that being, you know, something that, that kind of fits this, this mold, which is, you know, if the employee parking is kind of out of sight and the visitor slash ADA parking is, you know, on that forefront, then you kind of maintain that beautification. You know, you still can have that reduced cost and, you know, that, that visitor and ADA parking area might be, you know, for a small business, like Andy was saying, that, that, uh, you know, has a half a million dollar budget, that might be four spots. You know, they may only need two ADAs and two visitors. You know, but that still allows them to, you know, adhere to some of the beautification require, requests that we have as well as, you know, saying, all right, all my employees park back here. And-
I agree, that is very common. I, in my job, I do consulting for manufacturing firms, and whether it's in Kansas City or Salina, you'll drive in on an asphalt drive and there's parking there for visitors, um, but you go around the backside, the side of the building in the back, it's generally not paved, and the heavy equipment's running and all.
All the facilities that I've ever been involved with, with Westar, you know, all your, your hard surface parking was up in front, you know, for visitors, customers, you know, ADA. But once you initially got through the initial parking lot, everything behind the building was gravel because you've got, you've got your heavy trucks, you've got trucks unloading poles, you know, pad mount transformers. It was just a gravel surface, and it was a huge, huge area, and it, uh, and, and every facility I've ever visited with Westar, that's, you know, that's how it was maintained, you know? They met the letter of the law as far as ADA and, you know, the front of the building, they want that to look nice when you drive in for the first impression, but once you got past that initial driveway, everything behind the building was, was gravel. And, and it's, it's just been like that. Even at our building out here east of town, um, with all our heavy trucks, that whole parking lot is gra, is, uh, concrete and our storage area, but when we've had extra equipment brought in that we didn't have room to park on the concrete, we've just gone out to the grassy area and laid rock, laid gravel out where we could put in pole trailers, two or three extra pole trailers that we had accumulated, and we didn't put a hard surface there because we're not going to get any traffic. It's just basically to set a piece of equipment on there that's not sitting in the mud or sitting in grass that we have to mow around. And it gave us an easy way to drop off equipment like that on a site without it being, being paved, so even, even we found a way to, uh, you know, to work around that. So, um, I'm more inclined to find a way to, to make a compromise here to where we can, we can accommodate what you're bringing to us and some concerns that we have, and we always have the ability down the road, who's ever sitting here, if they want to go, we want to go back and revisit that and make some changes, that does give us the advantage and the ability to do that. If, if that doesn't seem to, to meet the purpose that we, the intended purpose that we want, we can go back and revisit that and then come up with something different. But, but, uh, on this strategic planning, um, you know, and I hear this all the time, people that would like to come back, but there's not a job here for me, you know, not, not with my, my education, my background, there's, there's not a job that I could come and live in Independence and work. I'm familiar with Shanute and McPherson, you know, some of the advantages they have. They run their own utility, you know? They have more staffing. Well, they have the ability to do that because they're making money on, by having their own municipality. They provide their own power. So, yeah, they can have a lot more staffing here and in there, and they can do a lot of things. They can offer an attractive rate to a business coming in. Matter of fact, I'm a little familiar with Shanute, they had a, uh, an abandoned, it wasn't an incubator building, but it, it was a building that it was a, was a previous tenant that had left, manufacturing tenant, and they worked out a, a very reasonable, fair price with an industry coming in and sold them that building. But I guarantee you, they also offered them a pretty sweet deal on their electric rates, too. I mean, they have, they have other incentives that they can offer that, that gives them a leg up on us that, that do not have that ability. Monette, Missouri, they're a whole, they buy wholesale power and they sell it to their commercial, industrial and residential base, and they're generating 16 to 18 million dollars a year. They're using that to build infrastructure inside Monette. They're buying it on the wholesale market and they're reselling it, selling it for a price. So there's so many different incentives out there that all these communities have to offer, and, and, and they all play a hand in this. You know, your tax abatements for how many years- You know, your tax abatements for how many years, all these things playing into that. That I, I think we need to figure out some way that we can kind of accommodate to a degree what, what you're asking us to do and accommodate what, some of the concerns that we have and move, move forward on that. And like I said, we can always revisit it down the road, but I don't, I don't want to be, I don't want to be like the federal government where they make a hard, fast rule and you comply whether you like it or not. And it's, and it's always, the citizens comply, but the federal government gets to do what they want to do because they're the federal government. So that's, that's my concerns on this.
The hard part is setting up an ordinance or any code that is applicable in every situation. And you've got to look at what the intent of the requirement is and, and go on, on that. What was general, in this case, what was perceived as a benefit of paved parking? What were you trying to accomplish with a paved surface? Because you look at, at this, we're concerned about a small business. So a small business has a, has a bigger financial impact. But then if you start looking at, at ADA spots or visitor spots, you're down to a smaller area that it might be cheaper just to pave everything. But, you know, when you're looking at, at a large manufacturing plant that's got 100 cars, you've got a different condition. If you've got a, a business or an industry that has high truck traffic of coming in, that that's mainly their job is distribution with multi-axle vehicles and heavy weight, then you've got different requirements that you're generating, different desk conditions and, you know, you're, you're limited on how effective the calcium chloride is because of all the traffic keeps stirring and breaking down the surface. So, you know, what you guys and we are doing is not an easy task anytime because we're trying to establish something for the betterment of the community, to give us direction, and we're trying to look at every case under the sun that we're going to encounter and make one blanket that's going to be applicable for everyone and we can't do it. You know, that's where variances come in and, and, you know, the best attempt that we can make and we go with it. Because there's always, you know, I guess from, from my past, I've always had to deal with these conditions. I've always had code restrictions. I've always had zoning issues that it's just part of doing business that we have to look at investing at the cost and, and operate within that. So, you know, it's, kind of gives me a different perspective when I look at it. But it is something that is quite difficult and the Planning and Zoning Commission has a difficult task. You know, I, I do appreciate all your time that you're trying to look at so much and the list to go through signage, attention getting signage, downtown signage, and now, you know, throwing in tiny houses and, and recreational vehicles that people are going to live in. You know, you know, this is times of change that we have to consider that. And, you know, I appreciate each of you, the time that you've put into this and tolerated listening to our opinions and I appreciate you sharing your opinions too. You know, thank you for being willing to sit in that chair and make these decisions.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I agree. This is, this is a little different for me because this is the first time I've actually had to sit in and, and go through a process like this. For my background is, I've always, I've always been in a position to where you could sit down and you could hammer something out and you would come to a compromise that maybe wasn't, neither side was completely happy with, but it was something that you could both live with. You know, I, I come from a union side where we, we would negotiate with the company. There were certain things we would like to see, certain things the company would like to see. And then the bottom line was we would give up something to get something. And so for me, this is, this is quite different because this is not, it's, it's, the process doesn't always work out that way. So for me, this is different and I'm really listening to what Gary and what Leonard are saying because they have a lot of experience. They've handled, he's worked with regulations, being an architect and his design work. And Gary the same way, he served on a commissioner council previously from here. So I'm drawing my information, listening to these two gentlemen because this is something that's totally foreign to me. So I'm, I'm going to depend on both of you and I will continue on the meetings that we have for your input and what your, what your thinking is on a lot of different issues because we, we collectively decide as a unit. And I appreciate your input because it, it is helping me try to understand what it is we're trying to do. Anything else?
I will say the variance, unit as a variance can be problematic because it does, as Philip mentioned too, you know, they have those people before them and it's going to be hard, you're going to make all these people come before them. It's going to be hard for them to deny that variance. And the variances before the Board of Zoning Appeals do not come to the commission. They go to the district court if they are appealed. You know, it's, it's kind of like dealing with something on a case-by-case basis means you have no policy. So, you know, you want a policy that is, you can apply, you know, consistently to everyone so you don't have this issue, well, this guy can do it, but this guy can't do it. Because you'll get into that. And that's why, you know, I think it's better to have, you know, clear expectations whether the, the front of the building has to be paved for, for visitor or ADA and maybe the back, if it's green, could be gravel for employees. Or maybe you say if the parking lot is X size, you know, it doesn't have to be in, behind the building and if it is larger, I mean, there's different things you, you could look at. But I get a little worried about, you know, saying, doing the variance thing and no, no offense to you, Leonard, I don't mean that at all. It's just, I, you know, sitting in those meetings for years where people come for variances, it's hard for this board to tell somebody, "No, you can't do that." So, you know, it kind of puts them in a bad position. And I think it's better if you have clear-cut regulations or rules that are, that are clear so that that can be applied. And then if, if, if that doesn't work, then you, you change the code, not say, "Oh, just go request the variance."
Yeah, variances are, are minimal use unless extreme hardship.
We get a lot of them on setbacks and things like that.
Yeah, because then you start getting into, well, because of this company is a friend of mine or this person's a friend, I'm going to give them a variance. And, you know, it's like, and even same with, with rezoning of property, that it's not applicable to the, the area, but it's a good buy or a good gift. So we'll rezone just because we want to help you out.
Or this company comes in and says, "Well, if you, we don't get this variance, we're not coming to your town." So what position does that put them in?
But then you can't be so lax that you have no control.
Right.
Either.
That's why, you know, my opinion as zoning administrator, it makes it a lot easier for the people sitting on this board and for staff to administer if we have, you know, clear-cut guidelines that we can follow, you know? And yeah, there could be a variance on, on some things. But usually a variance is when you're going to deviate a small amount. Like, okay, I'm building this and I set up a 10-foot setback. I need, you know, I need to encroach on that two feet, reduce it a couple of feet or something. And we do that all the time and it's not, you know, they, they look at that. But, but somebody going from a, not having to follow the hard surface requirement, you know, that's, that's something a lot, you know, bigger impact and it's, it's going to put, you know, concern is going to put our, Board of Zoning Appeals in a bad position.
That's why you just stay pay of everything.
And that's certainly up to you. I will say on the equipment though, like you said, like, of course, Westar's not in the city, but say that they were. Any equipment that is owned all under one ownership of that company, currently that is exempt from the hard surface requirement now. So if somebody is, if it's, if it's their equipment or whatever that they're parking there, it doesn't have to be hard surface. But employee parking is where it comes into or visitor parking or whatever. But it does not apply to, to equipment parking now. They do not have the hard surface where they store vehicles all under one ownership. That is already an exception.
Well, we sure don't want to put these folks in a, in a bad position. And the variance that would be, wouldn't be the rule, it'd be an, an extreme exception that you would make. It wouldn't be something that you could, you could continually fall back on. And then you get to the point that you both have made, that now you, now you're picking and choosing who, who gets, who gets one and who doesn't.
Once you make that first one.
And once you make that first one.
Basically set precedent.
Yeah.
And because I can't afford it isn't an excuse for a variance.
And, but I guarantee you, let's say that's the hardship. We're not coming to your, we're not coming to your town. That's what they will tell the board.
But financial is not a hardship.
That's correct. Under the variance, it's at city code section, I'm just trying to find here, 2-16. There are five specific factors that all five must be met before the variance can be granted.
Right.
And the problem is you go to any board, there's a lot of subjectivity which shouldn't come into play, but always does.
Yeah.
But one of the factors is the situation cannot be created by the action of the property owner or that. And the decision hard pavement to gravel, that's 100% under control of that.
So they, they wouldn't be able to apply, they wouldn't be able to apply the variance.
I mean, I'm not saying the board may grant it, but then actually the city could appeal and probably get overturned in district court. But that's kind of a waste of effort. Variance wouldn't be a good way to go.
So in, okay, I think I have a little, a little better understanding after listening to all the comments. Okay. Item C here is discussion with the Planning Commission. Possible future directives or additional topics for the Planning Commission to review. Item C.
Mayor, are you wanting them to go back and revisit this and make another modification and bring it back or do you just want to, I think they need some direction?
As of right now, but when the commission last met, the way the state statute goes back and forth, it's in their court.
Right.
And they've taken no action.
Okay.
And they can't take action tonight.
Right.
Because it's, that's how I understood it.
It's got to be put back on the city commission agenda.
So they'll put it back on the next decision, commission agenda and then they can determine if they want it.
They can make a decision or they can re.
Just let it die.
Let's, let's put it back.
On the next, on the 24th.
Yeah, let's do that. Because that's how I understood, this is just a work session, so there's no decision making during the session. So let's, let's do that. But yeah, thank you for your input. Like I said, it's a huge learning process for me. And I'm sure it is for you, especially some of you that are just first time members on the planning and zoning, yeah. So, yeah, let's do that. We'll put that on the agenda for the meeting on the 24th. And then we'll, we'll take it up at that time.
We're all invited to attend that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're riveting. You'll really want to be there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So. So what do we go to from here then? Are we ready for?
Number three.
Number three, adjournment.
Well, are there any?
Any other future directives?
Yeah, is there anything that you would want to?
The Planning Commission does recommend we review the comp plan every year and every year they have recommended that that be included in the future budgets. I know it's something that.
I just found on my bookcase a comp plan and started looking through it. I don't know if you two have seen a copy, but it might be beneficial for us to read the comp plan to be prepared for that time. There's something interesting under housing. It actually said there were, I think, 36 or 38 houses that needed immediate condemnation or being raised and there were initial 53. It'd be interesting to go back and see if we ever did address those that needed to be raised. And.
When was that written?
1981. Well, it was adopted in, adopted in.
Okay.
Yeah.
See if the number's gone up or down.
Yeah, I think it will help.
I think I know.
Me reading it to know what we've got. The Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, is that initiated by the Planning and Zoning or direct commission?
That's you guys. So we will bring that to you.
Okay.
Okay, so. Is there any discussion, I think I've already mentioned this, of any future directors from the Planning Commission? Any, anything else that needs to be brought up? No? All right, then we move to three, adjournment by the City Commission.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Do we need to do that on the Planning Commission's side as well? Do I, should we adjourn?
I'll look to you here at seven.
All right, then I, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been adjourned.
No, you didn't vote.
Do we need to vote? All in favor, say aye. There we go.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you very much for your time.
Great information.
And sitting in and giving us a lot of input. Appreciate it.